Thank you for coming and welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is March 14, 2018. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who've placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our Thank you. Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. And we are going to move things around a little bit. And what we would normally do right now is, I actually have a statement to read and then we would do public comment. And then we get into the agenda. But the first two items on the agenda, which is what I know a lot of people in the back are here for, we're going to move them up. So we will do the two ceremonial things now. And let me just explain the context of those first two items and of the last item. We have a happy chain of events going on here in that Sergeant Potter has retired after 48 years, and we will get to that in a minute. And when a sergeant retires, we get to promote a corporal to a sergeant, which we have done, and we will have that swearing in. And that, because we promoted a corporal, that creates an opening for a corporal. And that one, because one has to follow another, that one will be voted on tonight, so we can't swear that person in, but we will vote. That will be the last item on the agenda. And then that creates an opening, which we were able to anticipate. So we will be swearing in a new officer. So those are the police-related matters we have, and I have to say, it's one of the most enjoyable things I get to do, and I'm very happy to do that. So moving right along, I would like to recognize Chief Michael Pitco and Magisterial District Justice Kate Mc Gill, who will administer the oath of office to Sergeant Sean Bottolato and Officer Ralph Burrows.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Well, good evening, everybody. My distinct pleasure to see you and to introduce you. What's your privilege of being promoted? And the addition of the new Wall Street Springfield Township Police. Both these gentlemen performed exceptionally well in the testing process, and we are delighted to welcome them if they're their roles within the department. A little brief bio on Sergeant Bottolato. He was raised in Athens, township. Graduated from LaSalle College High School, 2001. Also, LaSalle University, 2005, with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and sociology. Attended and graduated from Montgomery County Community College Municipal Police Academy in 2007. Joined Springfield Township Police February 11, 2008, and was promoted Corporal May 6, 2016. A training synopsis. Fundamentals of Supervision, 2016. The Montgomery County Major Response Team, Light Response Unit, in 2015. National Police Mountain Light Association cyclist. Knows how to ride a bicycle. Firearms instructor, 2015. Field Training Wall Street, 2013. Defensive Tactics Instructor, 2012. Major Response Team, Field Force Training, 2011. And finally, First Aid CPR and A.D. instructor in 2007. I'd like to recognize Sean's wife, Bree, who is with their three children. And I believe Sean and Bree's folks are here parents, as well as Sean's uncle. And our new officer being sworn in tonight, that's Officer Ralph Burrows. Ralph was born in England and raised in Washington State. Graduated from St. Homi High School in Washington State. That's about 90 miles north of Seattle. I had to look that up. He attended and graduated from Montgomery County Community College Municipal Police Academy in 2014. Officer Burrows was previously a police officer with the Jacobtown Borough Police Department, initially as a part-time officer in 2014. And he's been a full-time police officer at Jacobtown since mid-2015. And I'd like to recognize not only all the Springfield Township Police officers here and attendants tonight, but also members of the Jacobtown Borough Police Department, as well as Ralph's girlfriend, Michelle, with us tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
I, Sean Bottolato.
I, Sean Bottolato.
Do you swear?
I will support.
I will obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
On the law of Pennsylvania.
On the law of Pennsylvania.
And the counter of the Constitution.
And the counter of the Constitution.
That I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For Springfield Township.
For Springfield Township.
And that I will uphold.
And that I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce the law.
And enforce the law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
Of a person's race.
Of a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Anticapitalism.
Anticapitalism.
I will obey the rules and regulations.
I will obey the rules and regulations.
Policy and procedures.
Policy and procedures.
Governing sworn members.
Governing sworn members.
Criminal and non-zero.
Criminal and non-zero.
Also, I will not knowingly accept.
Also, I will not knowingly accept.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money.
Any money.
Or other valuable things.
Or other valuable things.
For performance or non-performance.
For performance or non-performance.
Anticapitalism.
Anticapitalism.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than such compensation.
Other than such compensation.
As may be allowed.
As may be allowed.
Of course, issues.
Of course, issues.
So, thank you, Commissioner. You're welcome.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
I, Ralph Burrows.
I, Ralph Burrows.
Do you swear?
Do swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
The common law of Pennsylvania.
And the common law of Pennsylvania.
And the township of Springfield.
And the township of Springfield.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For Springfield Township.
And that I will uphold.
And that I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce the law.
And enforce the law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
Of a person's race.
Of a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Anticapitalism.
Anticapitalism.
I will obey the rules and regulations.
I will obey the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
Warranted members.
Warranted members.
Of the Springfield Township Police Department.
Of the Springfield Township Police Department.
Also, I will not knowingly accept.
Also, I will not knowingly accept.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable things.
Any money or other valuable things.
For performance or non-performance.
For performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than such compensation.
Other than such compensation.
As may be allowed.
As may be allowed.
By the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township.
Good luck.
Good luck to you.
Welcome aboard. Congratulations. Be safe, man.
At this point, I would like to call Raymond Potter down to the front, please.
What we're going to have right now is a case of real-time lawmaking. Because we have resolution number 933, but then we have to stop before you get it. It's a lot of it. It's making the tip of the tongue. There's folks in the line. It gives me great pride to read this. Resolution Number 1446 honoring a career of service to Springfield Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania by Raymond P. Potter. Whereas upon graduation from Cardinal Doctorate High School in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Raymond P. Potter served in the United States Air Force from 1964 to 1968. And whereas after Mr. Potter received an honorable discharge from the United States Air Force, he then sought a career in law enforcement. Whereas on February 9, 1970, Raymond Potter was hired as a Springfield Township Police Officer, who graduated from the Philadelphia Police Academy on May 12, 1970. And whereas during his early tenure as a police officer, Mr. Potter expeditiously progressed to the rank of Police Corporal on January 15, 1976, and Sergeant on May 14, 1981. And whereas in addition to his duties in Springfield Township, Raymond Potter secured professional tactical and police management training through the Office of the Attorney General of Pennsylvania, the Police Executive Development Training Program, Pennsylvania State University, and the Montgomery County Chiefs of Police Association. And whereas Sergeant Potter received numerous letters and memoranda commendation from the Office of the Attorney General of Pennsylvania, several Springfield Township Chiefs of Police, and the Springfield Township Manager. And whereas Raymond Potter was recognized by the people for whom he served and protected by receiving over 30 letters of appreciation from the residents of Springfield Township during his illustrious career. And whereas on numerous occasions, Sergeant Potter was the officer in charge for the Police Department on incident command for the township during police actions or natural disasters where no one was brought upon. So now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners has hereby recognize, commend, and wholeheartedly thank Sergeant Raymond P. Potter for 48 years of dedicated service to the Springfield Township community, and also extends best wishes to Ray and his family, and his family in the future. Now hold your applause. I have a motion on court. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed unanimously. Congratulations.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Steve here.
Let it go, Sergeant.
No more. Mr. Potter.
Thank you, Raymond.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Hey, Ray.
Ray, we have one more presentation. Why don't you come down and introduce yourself to Ray and the crowd.
My name is Sergeant Potter. My name is Maggie Foreman. I work for State Representative Steve McPartar in rural Dayton, in this beautiful new building. Representative McPartar was a vice chairman himself, who has today in her birth, so we sent me here instead to present to you this citation from the Pennsylvania House of Representatives. It doesn't need to be voted on. But after serving the citizens of Springfield Township for nearly half a century, I think the least I can do is read for two minutes or read maybe the content of the citation. Whereas, whereas the House of Representatives of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure in recognizing those citizens who self-employed and voted their lives, ensuring the safety of the residents of their community, and ultimately of all the people of this great commonwealth.
Chief Fantry.
And whereas Sergeant Ray Potter is being honored as a member of the February 18, 2015, in retirement, after 48 years of dedicated and distinguished service with the Springfield Township Police Department. And whereas a graduate of Cardinal Doctorate High School, Sergeant Potter served his country with honor and distinction as a member of the United States Air Force during the Vietnam War. A graduate from the Philadelphia Police Academy, he joined the Springfield Township Police Department on February 9, 1970, as a patrol officer. Sergeant Potter rose through ranks as a Corporal on January 15, 1976, and Sergeant on May 14, 1981. To this great credit, he received letters of commendation from the Attorney General's Municipal Road Task Force, the Chief of Police, and the Springfield Township Manager. Sergeant Potter faithfully displayed great loyalty, commitment, and professionalism in the performance of his duties as a member of the Springfield Township Police Department since his enlistment. He served with constant scale of helpful laws of this commonwealth and served as a role model for all those who aspire to a career in law enforcement. Now therefore, the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pays a respectful tribute to Sergeant Ray Potter upon his literally deserved retirement, notes with pride and gratitude for his executive service, which far exceeds those standards normally ascribed as a sergeant. Confers best wishes for every future success and happiness, and directs that a copy of this citation, sponsored by the Honorable Steve McPartar, on March 9, 2018, be transmitted to Sergeant Ray Potter.
Very nice.
Yeah, I know. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you. And before we move on as a point of privilege, I'd like, before Chief Fantry puts his jacket on, I'd like to acknowledge the Chief of North Wales, Don Fantry. He's our former deputy chief. Welcome back. He's busy right now, but welcome back, Don.
Thank you.
A couple announcements. The one is that we had an executive session prior to the March 12 workshop meeting in order to conduct interviews with the Township Police Department. And we also held an executive session at the end of the Monday night meeting to discuss a matter of litigation. And before we get into public comment, I have a statement that I wrote about the situation with the ambulance company. These are my words, although I think they do represent everybody on the board. They just haven't seen what I wrote, but I think everybody would agree with this. For approximately the past year, the Board has been working with the Board of the Springfield Ambulance Association to resolve a $300,000 debt owed to the township by the ambulance. Both parties recognize that the insolvency of the ambulance can only be rectified by monetary support from the township. This Board, the Financial Advisory Committee, and others have worked hard to better understand the changing dynamics of Springfield Ambulance and the ambulance business in general. In addition to our discussions with the ambulance board, we have spoken with the paid staff of paramedics, experts at the county, members and leaders of our fire companies, and several surrounding ambulance companies. We've analyzed what financial information we've been able to obtain, and have talked with knowledgeable accountants and billing experts. We invited neighboring ambulance companies to make proposals to provide ambulance services to our residents, six of which were opened last week. Based on all this information, the Board of Commissioners has offered to provide continuing financial support with two preconditions. One, we would like to name 50% of the ambulance board members. And two, we would like to name a new chief of operations. Both of these preconditions are supported by 100% of the paid first responders in Springfield Ambulance. We learned on Monday that the Board has rejected our offer. If that rejection is not reversed, we will be forced to accept one of the bids received and move forward with turning over the job of ambulance first response to an organization from another municipality. Springfield Ambulance will cease to exist, and all of our first responders will lose their jobs. This Board is committed to trying to save the ambulance and these jobs, and are deeply distressed that the ambulance board does not support our proposal. By this statement, I am making a public plea to reconsider and save the Springfield ambulance. That is my statement. And then, moving on, we are now at our public comment period. The Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item or otherwise, now would be the appropriate time. Do we have any public comment? Come on down, and why don't you stand by the mic? It's over there, so the camera doesn't get your back. And start out by stating your name and your address, please.
My name is Victoria Popper, and I work for the Springfield Ambulance Association. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Victoria Popper, and I'm a paid EMT at Springfield Ambulance Association. I've been asked to speak on behalf of the employees of our ambulance squad. As your president just explained, we are currently at a standstill with our Board of Directors and Chief as to what the next step in this endeavor will be. Until last month, our Board of Directors had kept us in the dark in regards to our debt with the township and the possibility of us losing our jobs. At the township meeting on Monday night, we were informed that they knew about these issues for approximately a year and decided amongst themselves to keep us uninformed. When our Board decided to tell the employees about our squad situation, we were told we had nothing to worry about. It has been made abundantly clear that our jobs are at risk. I am here tonight, making this statement in an attempt to persuade our Board of Directors and Chief to take the Commissioners' offer and walk away from our squad. We all rely on our jobs to survive on a day-to-day basis, just like all of you. I personally have a five-year-old daughter who relies on me and my income alone, like many other employees here. Without my income, I truly do not know what the future would hold for her and I. If our Board of Directors decides they are not going to walk away, the Township Commissioners will have no choice but to seek out one of the other ambulance squads that turned in a proposal to provide ambulance services for the township. If that is the route in which the Commissioners have to take, all of the current employees will lose their jobs, and there is no guarantee that the new ambulance company will rehire any of the previous employees. I am asking our current Board of Directors and Chief, as an employee, sole provider to my daughter, and on behalf of all the employees at Springfield Ambulance Association, to please take the generous and kind offer given by the Commissioners. All of the employees have unified in agreement that there is no confidence in the way our Board of Directors and Chief are running our organization. It is time for a change, and one that does not cost us our livelihoods. There is no other way for us to enact change other than, in essence, begging for the Board to walk away and allow the Commissioners to carry out their well-designed plan. I cannot emphasize enough of all of our stress and frustration with the lack of response and transparency from our Board and Chief. As a whole, we are hoping that this public plea can give us what we want and desperately need to continue serving this amazing community. To our Board of Directors and Chief, please choose to save our jobs instead of attempting to save one that will eventually be lost sooner or later. All we ask is to respectfully stand down from your positions and walk away free from this situation. And to our township residents, we, as your emergency healthcare providers, not only love what we do, but love this community and its residents. We do not want an unknown ambulance squad to take over after we have dedicated to this township and its residents for 68 years, and we hope you feel the same way. We want to keep our position serving you alongside your police and fire departments. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter tonight. We hope that this works out in everyone's best interest, and that we keep our positions as your emergency providers alongside the Commissioners with their help. Stay safe and healthy. Thank you again for allowing me to speak on our employees' behalf.
Victoria. Do you want a copy? Is that what you're saying? Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? This is a tough act to follow, but do we have any?
Is this about anything?
It can be about anything right now. Just, we need, we don't want you by the mic, because it works with the TV camera. And if you can state your name and address, that would help.
Okay. My name is Salomi Vaughn. I'm at 1905 Quill Lane. And I have a question, because I had to get a new roof, and I had to get a re-roofing permit. And I just want to know the rationale for this, because I feel that a roof is a necessity. And our permit fee is very expensive. And I just want to know the rationale for having to get a permit for a structure that's already there. And it's a necessity. And if you can't pay for the permit, does that mean you can't get the roof? So I just want, I don't know the rationale for it.
Okay. We'll do our best to. Do you want to handle that?
Yeah, absolutely. The reason for it is for our inspector to come out and take a look at the roof, to act as your agent, to make sure it's put on correctly. Also, there's an issue whereby there can only be two layers or courses of the shingles on, and that's a weight issue against the whole structure. So that some roofers would love to, and save the time, and just put a third layer of shingles on top of the roof, whereby if it's your second one already there, they need to take them off and put on, you know, a nice new set of shingles. But basically, it's for the inspector to come out and act as your agent to see that the job's being done properly.
And how's it calculated?
And so, does the inspector come out while they're putting the roof on?
Right, yes.
So would they speak to the homeowner while they're there?
If you're there, and you want to speak to the...
Because I don't think anyone came when my roof was put on. And then, it's the cost of it also. You have other townships that don't charge anything. You have some that charge a flat fee. But here, you charge $35 for the first thousand, and then $30 for each additional $1,000, which is, it's costly. And I'm just not understanding why it's so expensive for, you know, a structure that's already there. And it's a necessity. People don't get roofs to improve the, you know, oh, I just need a new roof. People get roofs because they need them.
Okay, well, thank you. We appreciate that, and we understand, we're giving you half an answer, and that it's really being done for your safety, to make sure it's done right.
I understand.
As to how it is and the price of it, we do periodically look at that and try and see how we measure up with other townships. The other thing you run into is the way they define these things, different types of projects. If you're building a house, everybody's going to have that kind of inspection. But certain types of improvement ones are caught by some, and some aren't. So that's why occasionally you have none. But none of that really answers. It is what it is, and it's the logic behind it is to actually protect you from someone who we don't know about roofs, and it's a lot cheaper to just slap another layer on there, and then you end up with something that's dangerous and difficult to fix.
Mr. President, if I may...
Yeah, go ahead.
I believe that the issue, because we had the same issue within my ward with another homeowner last year. I believe the issues are that the inspectors are not coming and saying anything to the homeowners. So the homeowners are getting billed for a town, a town required, and a permit, but the homeowner has no idea that they've been out there. They don't know what they've inspected, and then they get a bill. I believe that is the issue.
I think you're right.
That's the issue, plus the cost.
Yes.
The cost. And if you look around to, you know, the different townships, this is basically the highest township. And, you know, a lot of roofers told us that. And inspector did not come out, because I was, you know, we were there a couple days.
Okay, well, thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Okay, we will...
Do you have a comment?
Oh, sure.
So, Victoria, thank you very much for your statement. I got a chance to read it earlier, and it was very touching. I want to thank the paid employees of Springfield Ambulance for contacting me over the last 48 hours. I want to thank your families, your friends, members of the community that have been urging us to do everything we can to keep your jobs. And that was our intent from the get-go. The intent, two weeks ago, when Commissioner Cobb and I met with your Board, was that, that our intent through this whole process is to make sure that your job stayed. And like Commissioner Harbison said, there were two conditions on that offer. Now, what's disheartening is the fact that, as...
Because I don't think anyone came when my roof was put on. And then, it's the cost of it also. You have other townships that don't charge anything. You have some that charge a flat fee. But here, you charge $35 for the first thousand and then $30 for each additional thousand dollars, which is, it's costly. And I'm just not understanding why it's so expensive for, you know, a structure that's already there. And it's a necessity. People don't get roofs to improve the, you know, oh, I just need a new roof. People get roofs because they need them.
Okay, well, thank you. We appreciate that and we understand we're giving you half an answer and that it's really being done for your safety to make sure it's done right. As to how it is and the price of it, we do periodically look at that and try and see how we measure up with other townships. The other thing you run into is the way they define these things, different types of projects. If you're building a house, everybody's going to have that kind of inspection, but certain types of improvement ones are caught by some and some aren't. So that's why occasionally you have none. But none of that really answers. It is what it is and it's the logic behind it is to actually protect you from someone who we don't know about roofs and it's a lot cheaper to just go slap another layer on there and then you end up with something that's dangerous and difficult to fix.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
I believe that the issue, because we had the same issue within my ward with another homeowner last year, I believe the issues are that the inspectors are not coming and saying anything to the homeowners. So the homeowners are getting billed for a town, a town required and a permit, but the homeowner has no idea that they've been out there, they don't know what they've inspected, and then they get a bill. I believe that is the issue.
I think you're right.
That's the issue, plus the cost.
Yes.
The cost. And if you look around to, you know, the different townships, this is basically the highest township. And, you know, a lot of roofers told us that. And inspector did not come out because I was, you know, we were there a couple days.
Okay, well, thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Okay.
Do you want to comment?
Oh, sure.
So, Victoria, thank you very much for your statement. I got a chance to read it earlier and it was very touching. I want to thank the paid employees of Springfield Ambulance for contacting me over the last 48 hours. I want to thank your families, your friends, members of the community that have been urging us to do everything we can to keep your jobs. And that was our intent from the get-go. The intent, two weeks ago when Commissioner Cobb and I met with your board, was that, that our intent through this whole process is to make sure that your job stayed. And like Commissioner Harbison said, there were two conditions on that offer. Now, what's disheartening is the fact that, as of this evening, I pleaded again last night with your board to give us an answer. As of this evening, the response was that I'm being led astray, I'm being told misinformation. If that's true, could any of the board members in the audience tonight stand up and tell me otherwise? I didn't expect them to be here either. And then to find out that they're across the street five minutes before this meeting starts. If they truly cared about you, I truly care about you, I think this board truly cares about you, but if they truly cared about you, they'd be sitting here accepting our offer or telling us otherwise. What we're being led is not the truth. Commissioner Harbison said that RFPs went out.
Oh, sure.
The townships didn't require the ambulance association to do an RFP, but they were asked twice, once in November and once last month, to submit a plan of action that we would consider looking at and basically explaining to us why we had to continue funding Springfield Ambulance, why we should trust them with our money. What we got was recommendations from the dedicated employees in this township, the employees that we hear from the community who are so well when they show up in an emergency. They took time out of their lives and their schedules to put together recommendations. This is what we got from your board. That's disheartening. And to say otherwise is ridiculous. I know that there are many of you that are on staff that have submitted questions to the board unanswered. Kevin, you're here tonight? What I've read about you, sir, you're an absolute asset to that ambulance association. For them to tell you to keep your mouth closed, that they don't want you in input, just goes to show me what you're dealing with on a daily basis. If I was the president of that organization or the chief, I'd be asking you everything that you know to pick your brain because you're an asset to this community by what you know in the ambulance organization. Steve, absolutely with you. You're an asset to this community. You have knowledge beyond that I could imagine in the EMS. You're an asset. And I know that told it, it's taken on your family and you shouldn't have to go through this. You're a paid employee. This is not your job to keep this place afloat and I'm sorry that you've had to do that. And this is why I'm aggravated this and I'm trying to fight for you guys because this is not your job. Your job wasn't to figure out how to save Springfield Ambulance. It was to come to work and save lives. And lives being put at risk because decisions are being made by people who just don't get it anymore, that it's passed them over 10 times. The days of it being a volunteer organization are gone, it's a business. And you just can't show up when it suits you to run that ambulance organization. You have to be there day in and day out to make sure the checks and balances are being done, to make sure that these people are doing their job and to hear what they have to say and to take that and make your business better. And that's not being done. So at this point, I'm beyond frustrated. I've asked, I've asked one last time, and the response was they'll be in touch with us Monday morning. Well, what's the difference between Monday morning and right now? I don't understand that. I think that the entire board here is just frustrated, but this frustrates me more because I've been in direct contact with most of you through this process and it's hard to listen to the stories. The fact that you guys weren't responded to for a meeting with your chief, the fact that you were called cowards and the fact that you were accused of intimidating your board members, that's not being cowards or intimidating, that's trying to save your jobs. If my job was on the line, I'd be doing the same thing too. And I can sit here and say that I understand it. I do. I understand it from an organizational side. I understand the fact that I was in an organization once where the board was in it too long and they didn't want to change. And that fact that they didn't want to change caused good-hearted volunteers to walk away to the point where that organization is struggling. And when it gets to that point, if you can't look yourself in the mirror and say, I need to go to make things better, then there's something that's not right. So at this point, unless somebody in the community can persuade these people to take our offer, we have no choice but to move forward. I don't want to do this. It's the last thing I want to do. But they have to take the offer. It's the only way. So if any of you in the crowd that know anybody that's on the board or if you're concerned about service for ambulance, please contact them. Or if what we're being told is truly a lie by the paid staff, then I want some evidence to show that that's the case, but I've got nothing. You guys should be committed in your efforts because I'd be doing the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell.
Excuse me, Commissioner, I mean, Mr. President. I just wanted to make sure from Ms. Vaughn that, to let her be clear. I was trying to address it, but Commissioner Maxwell, I could see the passion and he needed to say what he had to say and I commend him for his comments. But concerning your issue, I just spoke to our township manager and you will have an inspector out there within the next couple of weeks. If that doesn't happen, please, you have my contact information, please feel free to contact me. But the-
What if the inspector didn't see the roof was on? So they didn't see the roof, they didn't see what they did? And I would also make some feedback about the cost of the permit. I just, it's outrageous. And it's not just me, it's for other residents in the community. It's outrageous. And I'd like some feedback on that. What if he pays?
If you will allow me, I will secure all of that information and get that to you shortly. I have that to you within the next couple of days. Is that fair? Is that okay with you? Thank you very much for your patience. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both. We are in the middle of the agenda at item three, which is the March bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the February check reconciliation in the amount of $964,387.22 and the March bill listing in the amount of $656,119.95. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Let me just make a comment on the ambulance. We are not taking any action. It's not on the agenda tonight. So that should be, unless there's somebody in the final public comment period, that's maybe the last you hear of it tonight. The next matter is number four, the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board did not receive any applications for hearings during the month of March 2018. Therefore, the regular meeting of the zoning hearing board scheduled for Monday, March 26, 2018, has been canceled. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning hearing board will be held on Monday, April 23, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Springfield Township Building. That concludes my report. So at this point, I would like to call on the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Shum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Shum. We'll move right on to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is going to sound like a filibuster because I have three pages of this, but if you hold tight, we'll get through a lot of stuff we've been working on for the last year and a half. So here we go. First, about the Springfield High School. The Springfield Township School District has proposed building and site improvements to the Springfield High School property at 1801 Paper Mill Road. The property is zoned institutional. The principal building addition includes a second gym to be located adjacent to the existing gymnasium on the southeasterly side of the school building. With the exception of the recently upgraded athletic stadium facility, the land development contemplates alterations to a majority of the rest of the high school campus. The main school entrance driveway will be relocated west of its existing location on Paper Mill Road, away from the intersection of Paper Mill Road and Route 309 Expressway. The main school building entrance will be modified and the main parking lot will be relocated closer to the main entrance for better access. A driveway will be created to connect the main parking lot and the auxiliary parking lots serving other portions of the building. Several athletic fields and tennis courts will be relocated on campus so as to accommodate the relocation of the main parking lot and the circulation driveway. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the land development plan for the Springfield High School, 1801 Paper Mill Road, which consists of the following. One, a 51-sheet land development plan set prepared by Schrader Group Architects Architecture LLC and Renew Design Group dated January 8, 2017, last revised February 1, 2018. Two, a stormwater management and erosion sedimentation control report prepared by Renew Design Group dated July 25, 2017, last revised February 1, 2018, including a drainage area plans sheets, one of three and two of three dated June 16, 2017, last revised February 1, 2018. Three, a post-construction stormwater management report prepared by Renew Design Group dated July 25, 2017, last revised February 1, 2018, including drainage area plans sheets, one of three and two of three dated June 16, 2017, last revised February 1, 2018. The approval of the land development is conditioned upon applicant resolving all matters identified in a letter dated February 9, 2018 from the Office of the Township Engineer to the Zoning Officer of Springfield Township and that the following approvals or permits are secured. Number one, Montgomery County Conservation District. Number two, NPDES permit. And number three, highway occupancy permit from PennDOT. In the event PennDOT requires or the school district desires traffic management improvements such as, but not limited to, street markings, lighted school zone signs or advisory signage, the Springfield Township School District shall be responsible for installation of the improvements. The plan shall not be recorded or township permits issued until the above conditions are met. So that is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Okay. Second, concerning the Springfield Early Learning Center. The Springfield Township School District has proposed to raise their existing school building currently leased to Antonelli Institute of Graphic Design and Photography, 300 Montgomery Avenue, and to construct an early learning center, a school, K through second grade, and associated site improvements. The property is zoned both double A and A residential. The proposed school will be built into the grade of the property and will be one and two stories in height at different locations. The height of the building will not exceed 45 feet. The total floor area of the building is 98,000 square feet with a footprint of approximately 73,650 square feet. A separate bus entrance is proposed on Paper Mill Road across from Carlisle Road. The main driveway entrance and parking lots will be located off Montgomery Avenue on the westerly side of the property. The proposal includes the construction of two independent play areas and an athletic field on the east and southeast portions of the property. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the land development plan of the Springfield Township School District for an early learning center, 300 Montgomery Avenue, which consists of the following. Number one, a 27-sheet preliminary final land development plan set for the early learning center prepared by Renew Design Group dated July 28, 2017, last revised February 9, 2018. Number two, a preliminary stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control report prepared by Renew Group dated June 29, 2017, last revised February 5, 2018. Number three, a preliminary post-construction stormwater management report prepared by Renew Design Group dated June 29, 2017, last revised February 5, 2018. Number three, a preliminary post-construction stormwater management report prepared by Renew Design Group dated June 29, 2017, last revised February 5, 2018. And number four, a copy of the drainage area plans dated February 5, 2018. The approval of the land development is conditioned upon the applicant resolving all matters identified in a letter dated February 28, 2018 from the Office of the Township Engineer to the Zoning Officer of Springfield Township. In conjunction with the plan approval, the board approves five waiver requests related to the installation of landscaping buffers or landscaping within the proposed parking lot. The specific code sections are recited in the February 25, 2018 letter from the Office of the Township Engineer previously referenced. With regard to the waiver related to street trees to be placed along Montgomery Avenue and Paper Mill Road, the waiver is conditioned upon a certified arborist reviewing the health of the existing trees. Any street trees recommended for removal shall be replaced pursuant to the Springfield Township Code. The approval of the land development is further conditioned that the following approvals or permits are secured. One, Montgomery County Conservation District. Number two, NPDES permit. Number three, the highway occupancy permit from PennDOT. Number four, PADEP, Pennsylvania Act 537 approval, which is a sewer approval. Number five, Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority approval. In the event PennDOT requires or the school district desires traffic management improvements such as, but not limited to, street markings, lighted school zone signs or advisory signage, the Springfield Township School District shall be responsible for installation of the improvements. The plan shall not be recorded nor any permits issued by Springfield Township until all conditions made a part of the approval are met. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Okay. And finally, concerning the Wissahican Orthopedic Specialists. The Wissahican Orthopedic Specialists own and operate their medical offices at 1401 Bethlehem Pike and the adjoining 5 West Wissahican Avenue Flower Town. Wissahican Orthopedic Specialists propose to raise an existing covered porch and replace a porch with additional off-street parking to better serve the property. The Office of the Township Engineer and the Springfield Planning Commission reviewed the proposed and both recommend that the Board of Commissioners consider waiving the formal land development review process for the proposal. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners waive the formal land development review process for the Wissahican Orthopedic Specialists, 1401 Bethlehem Pike and 5 West Wissahican Avenue, as it relates to a parking lot expansion. The waiver is conditioned that the applicant perform the site improvements pursuant to a plan entitled Wissahican LLP Proposed Site Plan, 5 West Wissahican Avenue and 1401 Bethlehem Pike, as prepared by Durkin Associates, Inc., dated November 6, 2017. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. If you were paid by the word, you'd be rich and we'd be bankrupt. Okay, moving on. We have a little less to do. Thank you, guys. All right, now we'll call on the Chairman of the Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the recycling report tonight. I'm pleased to announce that during the month of February 2018, Springfield Township residents recycled 174.4 tons of materials with a household participation rate of 79.4%. The net cost for the month was $18,257.92. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We move to the Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no reports, but I would, with the board's indulgence, like to add how proud and supportive I am of the students of Springfield Township High School and the Springfield Township Middle School and the participation of the nationwide walkouts for gun control. Their protest showed courage and given voice to an issue that is controversial but relevant. It's kind of reminiscent to me of the Birmingham Children's Crusade of 1963, which rapidly flamed at the civil rights movements. And I am just prayerful that their protest is just as successful. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for that comment. Moving along, I move on to the, so I'm calling on the Co-Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell. Yes, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item this evening. It is in regards to the Springfield Township Police Department Corporal Position. I move that the Board of Commissioners promote Police Officer Christian Wilber to the position of Police Corporal effective March 19, 2018. Corporal Wilber was evaluated through a written and oral interview conducted by Safe City Solutions LLC and also received an outstanding performance evaluation from the Chief of Police. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my report for this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. And then we can look forward to next month, right, when we would swear him in.
Right.
Great. And finally, I call on the Chairman of the Library Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner- Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. That concludes our business meet, part of the, committee part of the meeting, and we are open for any final public comment, if there be any. Come on down, state your name and address, please.
My name's Steve Yanis. I'm the Assistant Chief with Springfield Ambulance. I just want to take a moment to thank all the commissioners, especially Commissioner Harbison, Commissioner Maxwell, and Schwam, and obviously everyone else, but thank you for everything you guys have been doing. Thank you for all the hard work. I know it's been a very difficult situation, but a lot of respect from us, you know, and we appreciate everything you're doing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we can work this out. Do we have any other public comment at this point? There, oh, almost cut you off.
Okay, so I'm a little naive and uninformed about this, but I heard and listened to the passionate comments on both sides for the ambulance situation. And as a resident of Springfield Township, I just have a question. Do you have a receivership option? Because I know in organizations where leadership has failed, sometimes the employees are saved when a new management company is put into place during, for a temporary period. So I unfortunately have been one of those employees who's been under a receivership management situation. And to me, it seems like our township really benefits from the fine work of the EMTs and paramedics, from what you've said. And I've seen their service to my neighbors, and so I would hope there's a way to save their jobs and save the services of us by dealing with their management issues. And if receivership, I don't know what the rules are, the bylaws of the township, I have no idea, that's your job, not mine. But if that's an option, I think that may help the township and, and the good people that serve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me address that to the point, I have to educate myself on how receivership works, but our relationship with them is unique in that they are a totally separate organization. Our power is, we as a Board of Commissioner designate who does ambulance services. So we could just right, right now, say, okay, White Marsh is our ambulance, or they're not, and the county picks it up. So we have that hammer. We can replace them. That's legally simple to do. We don't want to do that, but we could. That, that's the one hammer, which certainly is why we have the request for, RFPs are requests for proposals, is why we had those. If we do go forward with the one bidder we're about to enter negotiations with, we would be using that power to just, time we flick the switch, do that. We also ended up being their biggest creditor with three hundred thousand dollars, because even though we have not supported them, we do their payroll for them as a convenience, and when they don't reimburse you for your payroll, you become their bank. So therefore, we are their biggest creditor, and we can get into a receivership that way, but that's a long legal process, nor do we particularly want to sue them. We could. We can't take the ambulances or do anything, because those are theirs. We can make them obsolete by taking it away, so that there's this, this, none of the paths to where we want to be are really optimal. That's why it's much nicer to work with them and say, what are our goals here? Our goals here are to have an independent, viable transition to something that's in recognition of what the future of ambulance management is. Because in the old days, they were all volunteers, the board were all volunteers, and people wrote their, their little checks, and the little check for guaranteed, you'd never have to pay for anything, and that was a nice little world. But as the demands and the expectations of the first responders have gone up, the ambulance people are all much more highly trained, and, and they're paid, and it's, and the reimbursement gets more and more complex. So it just, it forces a different set of skill set on the management and on the chief, and that's, I think, where we are. But we don't, that's where we are. We, any way to get there, right now, we're really trying to work on public pressure, because we made what we thought would be an easy offer. We're solving all the problems, we're not even putting a limit on it. We're saying, well, we will work it out, we'll figure it out. And they have said no, so hopefully they will change their mind. If you know anybody on the board, please let them know that this would be a good idea. Any other public comment at this point?
There being none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
[coughing] It's getting hot now. 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 It's getting hot now.